I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome you to our regular meeting here in March. Just a few opening remarks as we get started here. This is a meeting of the school board and public for the purpose of conducting the school's corporations business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public participation for agenda and non-agenda items as listed on Agenda Item Number Two. Our mission as Goshen Community Schools is to, we promise to inspire innovation, excuse me, empowering potential, enriching our world, and our vision. Goshen Community Schools, Elkhart County School District of Choice. Item 1.4 is approval of tonight's agenda. Do we have any revisions to the agenda?
No, we do not.
All right, so the agenda is approved as presented. And Item 1.5 is approval of the minutes from our March 10, 2025 regular school board meeting. Members, do we have any revisions to those minutes? I'm seeing heads shaking, so the minutes are approved as presented. We will move on to Item Number Two, which is public comment, and I will invite Mr. Glenn Knoll to come up and speak to us, sir.
Glenn Knoll, Goshen. Do you think, going back to the, I'm going to give you your medicine first. Reminder.
You're welcome.
Reminder that we need to buy American. I know that from the last meeting, private discussion, that the electric buses are probably dead, and I still would have had a problem buying it out of Canada just because I like to buy American, and it's a good policy to have, especially now. The outer door button still isn't functioning. Dinner one seems to be functioning, so you understand what that means with the ADA. Okay, so here comes the nice part. I'm going to be nice today because I might want to be remembered that way. So about 11 years ago, I got hurt, and people couldn't understand how I got nights after that, for a little while at least. I think it had to do with the pharmaceuticals that I was taking, but I did get a nasty note from the hospital, said they couldn't handle all the heart attacks that people were having because I was so nice. I don't want to go that far, though. Just remember that you're spending my money. Not just my money, it's your money, too, but it's all our monies. Spend it wisely. Make the correct decisions that will affect students, citizens, down the line, next generation and generation after that. In the old days, I can remember when, before I was on the board, they were honoring some teachers or something, and students got up and said, "So-and-so, you know, taught me this and that, and that's what I live by." Just remember, that is, that's the true legacy of the school system. What we teach students, and sometimes when we teach, we don't know we're teaching, and we could be teaching negative or positive. So just keep that in mind, and don't have a heart attack on me, okay?
Thank you, Glenn. And that will conclude our public comment this evening. We'll go to Item Three, our superintendent's reports. Mr. DeVois.
Thank you, Mr. President. First up, Dr. Bob Evans has some updates for the board on finances. Dr. Evans?
Right, so what's in front of you are the cash flows for January and February for our funds, and the way I do them is I separate the personnel costs for each fund versus all of the other costs for them. Since they're monthly cash flows, you can take 100% divided by 12, and you get about 8.3% would be the average maximum spend for each month. And as you look through there, you see the education fund in January was right on target at 8.08. Operating referendum, we're less than that, just shy of 4% debt service. Those bills are paid in June and December, so you should see zero expenditures on those until you get to June and December. Operations is high, but it's high because you might remember that I had authority to transfer some monies from operations to operating referendums, so that was an expenditure from operations. I anticipate that as the years go on, that will get closer and closer to its target. So it's high now, but since we're spending less in operations, it shouldn't meet the target by the time we get to the end. And then self-insurance, that's my conservative budget. We have to spend what we have to spend based upon our claims, and so we're at 9.98% in debt in January. Looking on down, without going through each one, you can see that the education fund is now within target. Operating referendum is still low, and operations is getting closer to the target by the time we get there into February. So things are progressing just great the way they are, and I imagine as the year goes on, they'll be even closer to where they should be. Are there any questions concerning cash flow?
I'll ask, I guess, on our even clarification for the self-insurance. What you're showing today, actual costs, or are those what you are estimating? Because I know a lot of times we estimate early in the year for self-insurance.
Those would be actual, actual costs, yes.
Okay. I know a lot of times at the end of the year, we have a positive where it comes in way below because, to your point, we didn't have as many claims.
Exactly, and we did last year, and so we're a little high in January, but I think by the time we got into the end of February, we're just almost exactly where we would hope to be for the year. Instead of 16.6, it was 16.73, so.
For many sicknesses, as we saw within our student body in January, it's not surprising we might have had a lot of illnesses.
Yeah, yeah.
Other questions?
I would, I guess, pass this on to next, our student achievement commitments, and we're going to start out with Dr. Metcalf. You're going to give a brief update on EduClima training that you've had, what it is, by the way.
So EduClima is a kind of a data warehouse that we have, we have recently, we got at the beginning of the year. We spent the first part of the year entering all our data, all our assessment data, all our attendance data, all our behavior data from our SMS systems. We had our first training with our principals, and they were, they could bring either assistant principal, some brought their coaches, their literacy coach, or assistant principals. We had our first training on Wednesday, the 19th. It went very well. I think principals were happy with what they're going to be able to do, and also what teachers are going to be able to do, very easily to find out about the individual needs of each student, and to be able to track how each student has done over previous years into this year so that we can better create interventions if needed.
Thank you, Dr. Metcalf. Next up, Mr. Jimenez. Would you introduce the Waterford staff to give a brief report to the board?
Yes, good afternoon. We are honored to have here the awesome Ms. Peña, Principal at Waterford, and her, some of her amazing staff from Waterford who will give us a brief recap of what's going on with the DLI program.
So as Mr. Jimenez said, my name is Christina Peña, and then I have a couple of teachers in our dual-language immersion program. Joy St. Germain teaches our first grade English side. Shelley Kaufman teaches third grade English side. Shannon Aguilar teaches fourth grade Spanish, and then Daisy Luera teaches kindergarten Spanish. So that's kind of some of the teachers. We do have 10 teachers total in our DLI program. So the goal of our dual-language immersion program is to have bilingualism and biliteracy in both English and Spanish, and that's what we hope to achieve K through however our oldest kids are, which right now they're in seventh grade, from when we started the program, and it'll just continue. And so we hope to also have higher academic performance, and in their classes, you'll see that with their data as they are teaching the students in both languages, and then also just to develop that cross-cultural competency so that our students are aware just of other cultures and different things. So the dual-language immersion program really is a 50-50 model, so half of the student's day is in Spanish and the other half is in English. The English side teaches, obviously, our ELAs, but then also has the math reinforcement, and then incorporating that science and social studies. Our Spanish side teaches math, which with Eureka this year has been amazing, as all of the materials that all of the students are doing are in Spanish, and then also Spanish literacy so that students can learn how to read and write in Spanish as well. And then we use a roller coaster model, so what that means is every day the students switch halfway throughout their day, and then within two weeks, they'll have equal minutes. So if you look at the little pie graph, that hopefully over the two weeks' time is equal minutes for all of that instruction. And a lot of this was gathered from Utah, which is a dual-language immersion state, so they do a lot of different things with DLI statewide, and so that's kind of the model that we're following. So our student population is very much the Waterford student population. We want it to be all of the students and representative of our school population, so it includes EL learners, special education students, and then a wide range of academic levels. 50% of the students that start in kindergarten speak only English, and then the other 50% speak Spanish. And so that's the 50-50 model, so that they have that integration and are able to hear both languages each part of the day. And then parents can sign up for this. It's just part of our normal kindergarten registration, and we're already almost full for this year, so we're excited for that. We do allow other students to move in, especially if they come from a DLI program, or if they've already had academic instruction in Spanish, so that they could move in into whatever grade they would be, just like any other of our kiddos that move in. So I thought instead of me telling you about what I love about it, I would let our students tell you. So this is Laurel.
Hola, mi nombre es Laura. Lo que más me gusta del programa dual es que mis clases tienen una parte en inglés y una parte en español. Ser bilingüe es un superpoder porque me deja comunicar con más personas.
And Laurel is a fourth grader. This is Ezra, also a fourth grader.
Hola, mi nombre es Ezra. Lo que más me gusta del programa dual es que puedo hablar con mis entrenadores de fútbol. Y tengo dos clases por día, uno en inglés y uno en español.
And our last one here is Taylor.
Hola, mi nombre es Taylor. Lo que más me gusta del programa dual es mejorar mi español. Me ayuda a hablar con otras personas en mi comunidad de Goshen.
So we love our dual-language program. It is thriving, and we expect that to continue for years to come. Thank you.
Any question, board members, any questions for?
You can't run away that easy.
Get back up, please.
So what do we see with our numbers from the population that starts in kindergarten? What is the attrition rate? Is it some percent, and then we are filling that in with new students? Is it always staying full classes every year?
Kinder through about second grade is pretty full. We do lose a couple in second grade. Our biggest drop happens in third grade because many of our students qualify for the High Ability Program, and so then that's when they choose to enroll in that at Chamberlain. So number-wise, I would say we lose maybe 20 at that third grade mark from starting with 56. So they're at about 36.
Any other questions from board? Thank you, guys, you're awesome. Appreciate all you do. Next up is our Operational Excellence Commitment, and Dr. Metcalf has vape sensor update to start with?
So the vape sensors have been at the high school for about a month now. We have, and they're in all the bathrooms now. So we have seen an uptick in the number of alarms that have been triggered. The assistant principals are not always available to go right then and there to get it. Luckily, we have cameras outside the hall, and even though by the time we get to a student, it might be difficult to prove that they were the ones in there vaping, the assistant principals have contacted families and parents and just talked to them, basically saying, "This happened. We don't know that it was your student, but just give you a heads up that while they were in there, that they..." So the sensor has gone off, so it has given an opportunity to talk to their, to families, and really kind of start spreading that message about, hey, vapes are an issue, and we really don't want them here at school, so please, please, please talk to your student about that, if you would. So we're pretty pleased with that.
And then also website.
Questions? I have a question.
Go ahead.
Let's say there's multiple students in that restroom. Are we contacting all three families, or?
We are. We are. So families, yes, I talked to Mr. Holstopple at the high school this morning, and we were asking about that. We do have, we do, once the videotape is reviewed, at some point during that day, those students are then brought down to the office and asked to please, "Do you have anything on you? If not, please let us check your bag." And then if nothing, we still contact the parents when that happens.
So at a potential, we are maybe false contacting families?
At a potential, but we always, we always lead with that and say, "We don't know for sure what was going on inside the bathroom, but while your student was in there..." Now, there have been times where it's only been one student in there, and so.
Right, and that's why I used the example of more than one.
But yes, we do contact, but we do always put that clarifier in there that, while we don't know what was happening, while they were in there, the sensor went off, so you might want to.
And I, you know, only two of us sitting at this table have students in high school right now, but I know if I would receive a call, it would be concerning.
Yeah. So. So we will always also encourage students that if the sensor goes off and you're in there, and it's not you, please report, please report that to a teacher or administrator.
Thanks.
Any other questions for the board? Dr. Metcalf, you get to update everybody on the website.
So we have undertaken a website update. We are working with a company, Apogee, I believe, no, it's not Apogee.
Smart sites.
Smart sites, thank you. And we have started with the preliminary part of looking at the site map of our current website, determining what really needs to be on the website, what doesn't need to be on the website. How do we, how do we make it so the information is what parents want to see without all the visual clutter, and also the, just the number of different things that don't have to be on our website that are. So we're really, we're hoping to, by the end of this year, by the end of this school year, be able to have our website updated and up and running.
Thank you, Dr. Metcalf. Any questions for Dr. Metcalf? Okay.
Can I ask one?
Yes.
I know I've heard several people have complained about some use of this on the current website. Are you engaging with the public at all to kind of determine what types of things they feel are missing?
No. We haven't, but I think what we've done is, what we'll probably, what we'll do is, we'll probably, once the new website is up there, get some feedback. There are some things that are legally required to be up there. We also make sure that access to calendars, things that we do, we are able to tell what people are mostly interested in, because that's what, hey, I can't find the calendar, I can't find the, I can't find the athletic department. So we have, in some, in some aspects, we have used some of the feedback we've gotten from complaints, but we have, until we get something out there. Mrs. Schreiner has a parent engagement group. They'll probably be the first ones to see it, and at that point, they would be the ones that would offer feedback.
Laurie, haven't they given some feedback to you?
Yeah, some general feedback, but also when we are sitting there, we're continuing to ask ourselves, thinking through the lens of a parent and the website, and instead of, you know, us as an educator role. So we're trying to be really strategic in thinking through the lens of, so that it's friendly. And I'm excited about how it's going to look. We've been able to kind of preview what it will look when it's, look like when it's complete, and it looks so much improved. But we will have time, like.
We might be ready to get some feedback.
Exactly.
We know of so many problems with it, they're just obvious.
Yeah, and we've talked, like, pulled some feedback from our administrators, too, in different ways, but we still have time to get a little bit more feedback from parents and, yeah, other important stakeholders.
I think until we, until we actually have, like, a new version, we'd hear a lot about what it isn't, so we want to, we want to be able to present it with something and say, "What does it mean?", instead of, you know, "How bad is this?". Because I would, I would be one of the first to agree, our website is not the most user-friendly, and is not necessarily updated as much as it should be.
Any other questions? Ball complex update from Bob. There's things moving as we speak, board members, so.
Interesting way to put it, because they moved more in the past two hours, so I'm to the positive.
Might be an update for me, too.
Yeah, I think it is. So we started the day with three issues with baseball, softball. One of them was, there was a concern that we needed to have epoxy painted surfaces in the bathroom rather than the standard way we painted the bathrooms and all of our other restrooms. And so that's been resolved, and we can, we can move forward with the paint that's currently on there. Potable water at the concessions and restrooms was a concern. There was, with the company that drilled the wells, they were supposed to file a form that then required a 30-day wait period, and they didn't file that timely, so not being able to have water, obviously, for restrooms is a problem. And then the other problem was the fire hydrant testing. They thought there might be a leak, and so as the day progressed, they tested the fire hydrant more, and they deemed that it does have sufficient pressure. It's less than what they would like, but still, the city has signed off on it. With concern to the painted surfaces, they have switched their positions, so the city's helped us out here also, and they are letting us move forward with the current situation. And the last one was the potable water. We are using a tank behind the concessions, and that will be able to be pumped into the restrooms, and that'll get us through to the 30 days that we need. So the latest news from Wygen is that we should be good to go for Monday, or maybe before, so it's positive.
So the first is coming up rather quickly.
Yes.
And potentially, we're going to dial back a little bit about our opening day ceremonies and that kind of thing, but if we don't do it now, I think that the doubleheader time would put us back until late April. We didn't really want to wait. So we may be going ahead with the, you know, first pitch ribbon cutting on April 1st, so, but we're going to, just so Terry, who is the magic magician.
No kidding?
Around that. What's that?
April 1st, no kidding?
Sorry. As long as we think it's going to be okay, we're going to be, we're going to go ahead with it, and just have some people throw out the first pitch, unless something comes. This is a moving target as of today. We even considered potential moving it up a little bit. Right, Bob? Bob's been working magic all day, so thank you.
So April 1st is the baseball, isn't there softball?
Doubleheader on baseball, softball night. There's, both teams play on the 1st, right, Terry?
Okay, I'm making sure.
That was the first game that both of them would be there.
Softball's playing on Wednesday.
That's what I'm saying, the first actual game out there is actually this Wednesday?
Yep, Portobello's.
No, I'm just, yeah, I'm just, okay. So the field will be in use Wednesday for the first game for softball.
Yes. I would like to say my appreciation to the city because I think they did pull things together really quick for us and helped us out, so appreciate their efforts.
Yeah. So there's our update.
Quick question, if I can, there's a, I just happened to have an email from a constituent. They're in the housing addition on the east side, and they were told it's going to, when that's all finished, that big pile is gone.
It's already coming down.
It's already coming down. They'll be left with a four-foot gently sloping berm.
Yes, and most of that dirt, I believe, is going to be placed on the berm back between that and the, and the new addition, so they're going to be moving that soil back to someplace on the same site, but it'll be, as you said, a more of a gentle.
It's already a third less than it was last week. They've started moving it.
Yeah. I just, I got this email Saturday, so.
Yeah. Well, next up is our people commitments, and we have a couple updates for the board there. Javi, or did you have a couple things, and then the second one, the Saturday event, are you going to do that, or is Laurie?
Yeah, I think my name's there, but.
Yeah, it is, and that's what I thought.
You should go for it.
Yeah, so go ahead.
So the first one is continuing the work with Masie. We've said Masie and Maisie. It's a Greek word we were explained that means together, and so our work together to improve outcomes for all students. It's a lot of vision work now. We're trying to operationalize what we're doing. We want to, you know, the vision is to ensure that we have scheduling that is conducive to collaboration so that we can share expertise between Janet teachers, special ed teachers, and EL teachers. And then also, we're looking to identify curriculum to ensure alignment when it comes to Tier Two and Tier Three for all student groups. So we have another session on Thursday, and that's ongoing, and as we progress, we'll start engaging our schools and principals with the work, and a big, big piece of the puzzle is going to be the schedule, master schedules at elementaries to make sure that we have collaborative time there, so. Any questions about comments? And then Saturday, we had a family event at GIS, thanks to Mo for opening, Mr. Trejo for opening the building for us. We had educational talks, charlas educativas. We had two presentations. Mr. Sheets presented on attendance, and then we had a lady from the Elkhart County Health Department, I believe, on vaping. It was, it was, it was an awesome event. Dolores and her team, Sandra and the parent liaisons, put it together, and they invited the guests. Very timely topics around attendance, and we talked about, you know, how we're, our intent is not to get anybody in trouble, but just to follow procedures to ensure that our kids are coming to school every day and on time. And then a lot of the presentation on vaping received really good responses. It was, it was really awesome to see how families, their comments on how they own the kids, and how it's their responsibility to support schools with both of these efforts of attendance and vaping, so really nice event. We had Mr. Trejo and Mrs. DeMyer there, and Mr. Sheets, and like I said, so it was awesome.
Any questions? I can close our reports then, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. So we will move on to board committee reports. Board members, anything to share this evening?
We had a building trades board meeting last Thursday, and they are wrapping up the major project for this year, the remodel project that they've taken on. That'll probably be done by the end of April for sure. Then in that neighborhood, they will also be building two sheds and a fence for some former teachers to wrap up their year, so it's going well. It's been a big, it's a bigger project than what, than what you would think for a remodel.
Legislative update, two bills, HB 1498, school accountability, so along with the letter grade that's being discussed, there'd be a high school graduation on track, rubric component, and attendance tracker, so that's being discussed now. And then SB 249, so many numbers. Basically, it allows high-needs stacking areas to be funded in lieu of the bargain contract, allows school corporations to provide a supplemental payment to teachers in excess of salary in high-needs area, whatever those may be, so. Those are just two bills I wanted to highlight, better currently in committee or being close to be passed, so.
Six weeks to go.
Six weeks to go.
Okay. Other updates?
It was a successful frigado in two weeks, so that's over. There's a concert orchestra tonight. I think they're with some people that afterwards, they will get some instructions, some professionals about, and then I think they made the Lerner on Sunday.
Sunday.
So I don't know, there's a 50% chance I'm wrong about all those details, so if you're going to go, you're going to want to check those out, but still busy, end of year, so it's your sports break, so.
Okay. Can I do on Sunday, anything Sunday afternoon, I'll be playing with the Elkhart Chamberlain stuff, anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, at the Lerner Theater.
Okay. And then for the redevelopment commission, I kind of mentioned a little bit, but so the redevelopment approved an agreement for townhomes along the Mill Race, south of the Hawks Building. the Hawks Building. The intent is that the first building of six units will be constructed roughly within probably fifteen months of now with a model unit completed, so prospective buyers can take a look at it. That is being developed by a local business, View Rail, in town. So the intent is that there would be up to eighteen townhomes there, south of the Hawks Building, so that was approved. And then just a supplementary agreement was put in place for Aerial Cycle Works, which is the large apartment complex here just south of our campus. You drive past that, you will see a lot of little flags. They are actively getting ready to break ground on that here officially in the coming weeks, so that is positive. And then there was just a lot of talk on road projects and I always like to listen about road projects because it just will eventually impact our busing. So there'll be tremendous road projects in the coming five years. I mean, that's the thing, they look out that far ahead, but it's important that we start looking at those as well because major stretches of road get closed for like a year, so that really impacts us, so. Okay?
Foundation.
I'm gonna talk about that next.
Okay, I was gonna ask about it.
So I'm gonna give one more chance on foundation. If not, I will, I will do it.
They meet the third.
They meet the second Tuesday at seven thirty in the morning, so.
Cause I've been looking at my schedule, trying to see if I can move some stuff. I wanted to give it a try and see if I can make it work out.
Okay. And so they do it both virtually and in person, so it gets a lot more.
And they meet where?
Here.
And meet here?
Yep. I can put you in touch with Michelle Kertur. I think she's still heading it up.
Sure.
So.
Okay.
Bob attends for our team.
Thank you, Ryan. Okay. All right, that will wrap up our committee reports tonight. Item five is our consent agenda items. Five point one, approval accounts payroll dated March twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five and payroll dated March seventh, two thousand twenty-five. Five point two, music in the parks, out of state field trip. Five point three, personnel. Anything to highlight from the consent agenda items? Hearing none, they are approved as presented. Moving on to item six, our action items. Six point one, memorandum of understanding, Boys and Girls Club Summer Learning Lab. Dr. Metcalf?
So I've been talking about this over the past couple of months and everything is finally go. The funding has been given by the state in the form of a grant, which will allow our students, grades K, that are currently in grades K, one, four, five, six, seven, eight, to attend summer school for about a five-week period. The memorandum of understanding just kind of outlines what the Boys and Girls Club will be responsible for. They will be responsible for hiring and overseeing our teachers. Then our responsibility really falls into providing them a place and transportation and then some of the other things that we normally would do, such as the summer foods program that we provide. For summer school, we usually provide breakfast through that anyways and then lunch, so that would be provided. We are looking at holding it at Chamberlain so that once it's done, students who go to the Boys and Girls Club can just walk back there and then we would transport the rest of them home.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion and a second for item six point one?
Move from passage of item six point one, the memorandum of understanding for the Boys and Girls Club Summer Learning Lab.
I'll second. Moved by Mr. Glick, seconded by Mr. Goodman. Questions for that agreement? Comments from the board?
I noticed in the agreement, there was a section about identifying average students. Is that separate from the summer school required for the reading, you know, if they don't pass I read?
So second and third grade, we're going to continue to do our own and so we will be doing that and identifying those. Yes, they are asking for us in those remaining grades to identify about forty-five students at each grade level who, who have a need or a significant or a lesser need than, than a student that is on track. And so we will be working with them to provide them. We already have a data exchange memorandum with Boys and Girls Club so that they can see some of our, our information. We will, teachers will be, and administrators will be picking who those kids are based upon what they see in the data that we have.
The one other question I had was about the teachers with them hiring. Is that teachers that are already hired by Goshen Community Schools or do they have to hire all new since it starts in June if there's a teacher shortage? I mean, I realize it's summer, but do people want to work?
Well, that's, that's an interesting question. That's one of the reasons we peeled back. Our summer school to some extent is after, post-COVID, we were having a hard time filling. The amount of money that they're offering is roughly about what we would pay also an hourly for our summer school that we're doing for our second and third graders. It's just a longer, longer period. We usually only do about twelve to fifteen days, so this would be, provide an opportunity for teachers to, to earn substantially more. And it can be teachers, and actually we're sending information out to our teachers this week, it can be teachers who are currently teaching in our school system and it does not necessarily have to be just elementary or ninth, ninth grade. If we, there are some high school teachers that would also like to try, they're handed eighth grade. If there are, we have retired teachers that have a current license, they might also be eligible. But the Boys and Girls Club will be handling all the hiring. They will not be our employees during that time, so they will be handling all that hiring piece.
And they're being funded by a grant?
It's funded by a grant from the Department of Ed with Mind Trust is the company that is kind of providing the curriculum and the training for those teachers.
And that grant also cover our expenses as well in conjunction with it?
Does not cover, does not cover our expenses. It's kind of an in-kind, it's a kind of our in-kind part to be part of the grant for, to, to allow our students to access it. We would normally be doing transportation for some summer school anyways. Our custodians are usually there. I think the part that, the part that's probably more than what we would normally do is that transportation is longer, so we would need some, those bus drivers for a longer period of time over the summer.
Other questions from the board on item six point one? Ready to vote or anything else? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor for item six point one. All in favor, please raise your hand and you say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes six zero. Thank you. Item six point two, resolution eight two eight, a resolution to elect Angela M. McKee as director of Goshen Community School Corp, School Building Corp One. Mr. DeVoy.
Yes, Mr. President, we ask that you approve resolution eight twenty-eight to approve Angela McKee as a director for the School Building Corp. She's currently serving in that capacity. Her term just came up and it's time for us to prove her again. She's done a nice job. We really appreciate her.
Okay. I have a motion and a second for item six point two.
Motion, approve resolution eight twenty-eight A, resolution to elect Angela McKee as director of GHS School Building Corp One. I'll second that.
Moved by Mr. Goodman, seconded by Mr. Glick. Would you, Mr. DeVoy, just tell people, the public what Building Corp One does so we're all on the same page? I think I get this question a lot, but.
Yes, so technically, school corporation cannot borrow money directly. So we have a building corporation that's formed that actually holds the deeds to the, to certain properties of ours and then because we, then what we, they do is they borrow the money on our behalf and we pay actually a lease payment to them. So a lot of times we'll call it a leasehold organization and it's not the school board directly that makes these decisions, it's that, it's that building corp.
This is governed by the law that we, it's correct.
The state of Indiana, school districts are not allowed to have direct debt.
Right.
And this is what all the school districts do because all the school districts.
Have debt.
Have debt.
Okay.
Consistent with our constitution in Indiana.
And it is made up of three members and the three members nominated Angie to continue to hold this role, so. Okay. Yes, questions? Kai's wanted to clarify that so everyone knows, often people, we only do it every couple of years, but it's good to remind us all what Building Corp One is. Comments, questions on item six point two? All right, hearing none, all in favor, please raise your hand and you say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign? Passes six zero. Thank you. All right, we will come to the closing items here. We'll start with seven point one, any miscellaneous items this evening?
I guess that's my responsibility. So let me, let me go. Spring break is April seventh through the eleventh and our next meeting will be here Monday, April fourteenth. And immediately following this meeting, just a reminder to the board, we're gonna use this room, go to the room as soon as possible and then we're going to do some board education in regard to learning more about property taxes and some of the rules around that for us on tax rates, et cetera.
Okay. And board members, any items from us this evening? Okay, so with that, I will take a motion and a second for adjournment.
Second.
Moved by Glick, seconded by Goodman. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. We are adjourned.